Johnson.
With, um, Valentin. We're about to start, so it's delayed.
You need it?
Wait, wait. Alrighty. No, ma'am, I have it. Thank you. He got it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Alrighty. We're gonna start with, uh, the pledge of, what? Yeah, yeah. We're gonna start with the pledge of allegiance to honor this great country. A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I make a motion to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aight.
Second? Second. All in favor?
Aight.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, want me to make the announcement?
Notice here by giving that the town of Walton, New York City, its master plan review committee has developed recommendations to update and amend the state components of master plan attended. We state further notice that pursuant to Town Law Section 373-38A, the public hearing will involve the town board of Town Hall, on Wednesday, 29th, at 7:30 p.m., Walton Town Hall, 99, Paragraph 48. To consider view, the recommendations to update and amend the components of master plan. Anywhere as new town walkers and have heard upon state proposed master plan update, except public hearing, but the proposed recommendations may be accessed off www.townhall.com. Copies of said recommendations are also addressed to you at Walton Town Hall, 99, Paragraph 48. The town hall will make every effort to guarantee access to the persons with disabilities. Anyone requiring special assistance or any other information, contact the town clerk. By going to the town hall or the town hall office, or use your address to town clerk.
I'll note that the public hearing notice was posted and published in a forty-two block.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, everyone. Um, we got this public hearing on the recommendations from the master plan review committee. We ask everyone who comes up, five minutes, state your name. You could come up after. This is not going to be a debate. We'll take your concerns. If we can answer some of your concerns, we will. So if anyone in the audience could start?
With, um, Mr. Johnson, which to introduce the members of the committee as well. So everyone knows who's here. Alright, good evening. Thanks for coming out. Hopefully you guys got some questions we can address, take care of concerns.
Sure, thanks.
In this today, so the committee, not everybody is here, but we have Keith Resad, Jim MoDice, Chris Michaels, Carol Gillen, um, and myself. Steve is not able to make it and, um, several of the members are not here yet at some time. So that's where we're at and, uh, by the time we kind of went over some of the recommendations that we had, so hopefully we got a chance to watch it though, get to understand them. I apologize for pointing at the half of the work, because it probably departs on screen, but, uh, you know, now we can talk to the new board and the plans. But it takes a while, he's there, alright, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Johnson. Anyone in the audience? See people here. Let up.
Good evening, Mr. Supervisor, members of the town board, members of the comprehensive plan committee. My name is Charles Scott Lee, I'm a layman's attorney from Whiteman, Austin, Montana, and Alden, New York. Here on behalf of RDM Group, a warehousing and manufacturing developer who has several properties under ownership and contract in the town of Walton. Uh, we submitted a letter commenting on a proposed draft comprehensive plan today. I'd heart copies if you'd like, just some quick summaries, uh, of the letter. And I'll keep it under five minutes before you start.
Yeah, that we just show for the record, and the town is in my seat of the letter that you made out today, and then part copies are distributed to the town board members and to the community members.
Great, thank you.
Will be part of the record.
Uh, and that letter just kind of goes through the properties that RDM has under contract or owns and has either approved or pending warehouse or manufacturing, uh, uses, uh, on those properties. And we just wanted to bring those to light to make sure that the comprehensive plan, um, is consistent with those properties that have been approved that are under construction. Um, you know, to the extent that there are changes to the zoning that affect those properties, uh, we would request that there be some grandfathering provisions in the local laws, uh, that's, uh, are subsequent to the adoption of the draft comprehensive plan. Um, one property of note that I wanted to bring to the board's attention was a two-tax parcel property known as Thirty-Six Finney Drive. This was two tax lots consolidated to one. Uh, one tax parcel of the zone ENT, one tax parcel of the zone ENT Lite. The planning board, uh, gave a negative declaration and all planning board approvals for a hundred and six thousand square foot warehouse. We are on the cusp of getting those site plans signed. We just got comments back on our developers agreement from your town attorney and your town engineer. I noticed in the draft comprehensive plan that that property is going to go from being split zones to all ENT Lite, which will then make the approved warehouse prohibited use. So we would request that there is some grandfathering language to allow the approved warehouse to be constructed. Um, if not, we would recommend that that property be looked at again for zoning in ENT district. Uh, that property is next to several industrial uses, including EcoBats, Monroe Cable, R I J Pharmaceuticals, O C S Industries. That property is not nearby any residences. It's at the end of the Finney Drive cul-de-sac. We have highway permits from the county. Traffic improvements have been reviewed and addressed by this town. So we request that that property be zoned ENT, or otherwise the approval be grandfathered into the local laws. Another project that we have that is under construction is a distribution center at five ninety-nine East Main Streets in the David Commercial Park. That project was approved for a two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-square-foot distribution center. The internal access road that is to be dedicated to the town is pretty much complete, all but a top coat and a development pad is done. So those development rights have vested under law, uh, but we would still like that to be recognized in the local laws. The town board is also where the RDM has a proposed light manufacturing use, uh, proposed on Karate Road, which is in the O R zoning district. We just wanted to make sure, um, whether or not that property would be rezoned into ENT once that industrial access drive is built. The, the draft comprehensive plan was a little unclear there. Uh, in addition, we were wondering if there are any changes to manufacturing the light manufacturing leases. A few other things to highlight is the limit of three extensions in the draft comprehensive plan. I certainly understand the need, um, to limit extensions, but I have noticed a development trend these days that the post-approval process often takes longer than the approval process. There are several transactional documents that have to occur. A lot of developments require approval from the, uh, New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. That takes months and months and months. So there should be some reasonable limits, um, highlighted in there. One thing I will note, uh, is that the increased height for warehouses and distribution centers, I think is very accurate. I have been before this town zoning board of appeals on several occasions, getting area variances for warehouses and distribution centers. The way those, uh, uses work is you need at least forty-five to fifty-five, or to forty-five to fifty-five, fifty feet of internal clearance, which typically makes your building around fifty-five or sixty feet. So allowing for that, uh, would cut down on administrative tasks of your zoning board of appeals. That was actually all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Real fast, though. You mentioned the three extensions.
Yeah.
If you, if you were writing it, what would you make it and why?
I would, uh, not be so definite in the number of extensions, or allow your planning board or your zoning board of appeals to make that determination on their own, based on the facts and circumstances of each individual case. Certainly you might have an instance where there is really no explanation or need for an extension and the developer, let's say, was dragging his feet. There might be others where the developer is struggling getting a wetland permit, a wastewater treatment plant permit, or a water withdrawal permit from the D E C, and that's taking up to six months to re-hear these things, even with D E C time factors. Uh, so I would leave it as a case-by-case basis for the planning board, uh, and that allows you the flexibility, the planning board, the flexibility to control development.
So you're suggesting something of a, of a, of a system?
Yes.
That sum it up?
Yeah.
Okay. Can I just add to that, though? The current code already has one. We actually extended the limit with three. The current code insists, sort of, just hasn't really been followed all the time, which is why this board voted up. Um, if you look at our current code, it's in there. When you actually put it in plans, you can read it, it's actually in the draft. So there already is a limit on extensions. This makes it four years, twelve months from your first extension with three additional. So if you can't get your stuff together in forty years, we're not saying the project can't move forward. This board's saying you need to come back and address any zoning or anything else that has changed in that four-year period. That's what it's for. It's not saying if you don't avoid, you can't do it. You just need to say, hey, listen, spend four years, haven't put a shovel in the ground, haven't mowed the grass, haven't done nothing. Maybe I need to look at what's going on. Now, if you started stuff, obviously, that doesn't matter, because you already started the project and you're moving forward and invested into it. But this is more designed for people that get something approved with no intention to build, no intention to be, you know, landowners, business owners, and walkill. They just want to make money, live it. So then they let it sit on the market for four, five, or six, or ten, fifteen years until it sells, and then the community around there is affected. So we got to be behind it, was, to, you know, put some checks and balances. So if you're not actively moving forward, and obviously, you know, if you're before other boards and stuff, that's going to take time. So certainly that would be something that this board could look at. But without having some finite number on there, you know, you can have projects that were approved in the seventies, be expecting to move for today. That really shouldn't be fixed. I think you could do that.
Yeah, I think that, that, I think that's very fair and very reasonable. I would just say you should always have some flexibility filled into your code. Um, and it is refreshing to hear that they are one-year extensions. Uh, a lot of municipalities, the town of Ocean, for example, you have six-month extensions at a time. Unfortunately, six months go by when, you know, it's not your fingers. Um, so certainly that sounds reasonable. The board might consider putting some flexibility in there, but by no means that the most serious comment we had in our life.
Yeah, I'm just addressing that one.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Arjay Smith. I've had the pleasure of working in the town of Walton, with the town of Walton, for just around fifty years. Um, I could speak ad nauseam without comments and will be wrapped with changes, but I don't want to comment on the ones just to say this stuff, and that is the sunshine laws. The best type of land use planning, because there only is planning that can be comprehensive, designing an overall development plan of its residential, retail, commercial, or industrial, that can be phased in over time. Um, use as an example, the Riverside Road project. The town in two thousand and four, as part of the earlier comprehensive plan, had proposed traffic improvements. One was the tunnel under Seventeen connecting the Galleria with the Mont Plaques pocket. Great project. Town initiated it. Town funded it, state funded it, all government funded. Um, the pro, the town also in that, in that plan, which I have here, hangs in the planning department's conference room. Um, the plan should propose a collector road parallel to Crystal Run Road, running from exit one-twenty-two, the new interchange, the new exit ramp, which is going out to Vid this year as the second phase of the one-twenty-two, which will drop, uh, traffic right on to, from Seventeen going west, right on to, um, Crystal Run Road. Across that light, that road was to extend all the way through, collect, uh, Sullivan Lane, all the way through to Riverside Drive, and eventually go through to Bushy Turnpike. Um, what was standing in the way of that plan was eleven properties, actually more than eleven, but eleven between Crystal Run Road at the exit, at the light where the commuter lot is, and Riverside Drive. Private enterprise, private developers sought to acquire and assemble eleven tax parcels, including pre-residential properties, homes, and put them all together for a comprehensive plan, the way with three buildings, with the road that the town twenty years ago put on their one wrist, into their, uh, desire of us. And, um, that plan is currently before the board, has, has been made final approval, um, and is now ready before the D E C, the health department, what was referred to later. Um, that would, plan would very unlikely be built within the time period permitted here in this proposal. It's three buildings totaling one-point-four million square feet. It would, all the infrastructure would be built, probably take a year or two to build the infrastructure. An occupant from one building would be custom-built, another building built, other building built, would take, could be ten years. You discourage investors from doing that kind of collaborative, cooperative, land-use development by putting them at risk where they could lose their approvals. Um, the way the law, the way the proposal was, is written, you have your approval for one year, and then you have three extensions. Those extensions, whether you started the project or not, if you go beyond those extensions or those extensions to nothing granted, you would have, lose the balance of your development. Um, as other examples, Wildflower took over ten years to build out. Fairways took over ten years to build out. And they would hit just sunshine long before it was built out. So you discourage those kind of developments, because who's going to take the risk? Just like the gentleman that turned before me, I encourage you to look at this. And once a project is started, the rule's always been, you, there's no sunshine till it's finished. So you start a project, and there's all kinds of things. There's economy, there's financing, interest rates, um, the help of the developer, all kind of, uh, challenges that could be bad for putting the outside agencies that would delay a project. So I just ask you, please consider that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Don Capello. I'm attorney with J G Law, J G Law. I'm here on behalf of, uh, two clients, as you know. Uh, the first is Tiger Companies Commerce, Commerce Park at Barrows Development. They had a proposal, uh, before your planning board and a hardship application before this board, uh, since April twenty-fifth, uh, twenty-twenty-three. Uh, it's located on Rumie Grove Road and Shango Road, tax map, section three, block one, lots thirty-nine, one-two-three, forty-two, eighty-four, and forty-eight point seventeen. Uh, the other one is a new cemetery development on Connor's Road. And what I would like to talk tonight about is process. You can hear a lot of specific items. Now, my colleague, Mr. Groban, spoke to you about an important issue regarding extension. It's five minutes to do so, and as part of that five minutes, there was some dialogue going back and forth in extension. As Councilman Coy mentioned, that's an important issue. There are a lot of nuances that deserve discussion in an open forum. It deserves input from your council, from council of, uh, developers to come up with a fair solution that will guide development in the town, uh, town of Walton. Um, two-seventy-two requires, um, in its legislative finding, where it speaks about comprehensive plans, and its provisions refer to not only preparation of comprehensive plans, but also amendments, that the participation of citizens in an open, responsible, and flexible planning process is essential to the designing of the optimal town comprehensive plan. If you have a special committee, those committees are supposed to meet in open meetings, they're supposed to hold a public hearing on a comprehensive plan prior to referring it to this board, and they're too close to prefer it by resolution. Now, why do I say that? Because when we appeared before your board, um, after our April hardship application on the, um, Walton, I submitted a series of about fifteen emails. Um, the first one was from my client, this is Representative Jason Radford, to Councilman Johnson, if you recall at that meeting. We discussed the moratorium, and we said, we understand you're in moratorium, we want to consider it. We have a lot of information that would be, we believe, would be important to your committee to consider in its deliberations on what is appropriate for this parcel and other parcels. On June thirtieth, uh, Mr. Rasper wrote a letter to Councilman Johnson, who we were told was the head of the committee, requesting the opportunity, uh, to appear. He had no response. I followed up with an email to Mr. Frank. Um, he said he would speak to people, had worked with Will for probably thirty-plus years. I respect him, he's been always responsive to me, and so I don't believe the issue would be with Will. I have in this record, uh, emails that I sent to this board, to, um, the town clerk, requesting, um, to know when the meetings were there, because if we weren't going to be heard at the meeting, we would at least like the opportunity to be able to sit at the meetings, to hear what was being discussed, so we could respond. I had no responses. I tried that, I literally, I'll submit the, to you, you know, package tomorrow if you like, but I have months of emails just requesting the opportunity to discuss the issue that relate to this parcel and to development in general. What is the purpose of that? The purpose is to make sure everyone's heard. I don't even know whether any meetings were, the public in general was allowed to comment about the issues. That's important, because my clients have invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in the property and would like at least a seat at the table to be heard and have their
In order to get work done, then the public would come in and just that that defeats the purpose in the in the committee. The committee works, they have their their data, their homework, and they put this draft together and it's presented to the public. And we hear from the public, and that's what we're doing today, and that's what we plan on doing the following weeks.
Endless.
Endless.
And just as a as a note, the attorneys in the room know what the process is, and the conveners know what the process is. But don't forget, the way it starts with updates to the comprehensive master plan. There has to be environmental or beyond the secret regulations for that. That's going to be an ongoing process. And then, once the committee, the master planning committee, has what they believe is their recommendation, final recommendations after this part of the process goes up. Those will be sent to the town board, referred to the county that's required for adoption of the updates to the plan. Once that's done, then we go about the process next of dealing with updating the zoning in accordance with the plan. So I'm sure you know that already, but I want everyone to understand what's a little bit what's going on. It's a lot of the details. But this is the start of the process after the committee's rather hard work over this last period of time. And tonight is to start to hear from the public. This isn't your only shot. And let's be very clear, Councilman Johnson's been clear about that. Supervisor's been clear about that, as has the board. So with that in mind, uh, thank you for letting me say that. And Supervisor, back to you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Please step up, state your name.
Hi, good evening, for the record, Ross, when were this centering the survey properties? I just wanted to point a clarification regarding the approvals and the three-year extension. So the way I write is that the conditional approvals continue to be extended. That section has been modified. The section that is being modified is actually a perfect approval. You get a signed site plan. You currently only have one year, once that site plan is signed. Now you have one year plus three extensions to the site. I don't think that's a conditional approval. My understanding of the reading of it, and I don't know if everybody got the same.
I think that's how I read it as well.
Did I summarize that, Eric, or no?
Kind of, if you look at, if you go to the
There's a conditional approval section, and then there's once you've signed the plan, you have a final approval.
Right.
You only had a year, and now you all have three.
You'll have three additional on top of the one, so it takes it to four.
What can people just build?
And if you look down here, but if you look at the bottom, there still is like RJ was talking about. If you start the project, you can build more doors with it. But again, this is adopted coming code from two thousand and seven. The year resolution by the town board. But tend to code today, the only thing we did, because we originally came up with some sort of limit on like how long a project could exist. You're like five years, seven years, seven years, whatever. But then when we went into code, it was actually two years, twenty-four. If you will be doing a code this year, then in thirty-six months, if you have over twenty units. So we says, the only thing we added, but the maximum number is extended. So you get your one year, three more, you got a four-year period to be moving forwards. But this probably already exists, which is not changed, it's in the code now.
Thank you.
You got it, you got the way you turn.
Conditional approval is section is a separate section, so I don't think that's effective. This is when you get the plan signed, is what I understood. So, um, next, I sent Eric, I sent you an email about the Danza Business Park, which is now Goshen Turnpike Business Park. We had, um, just filed site plans for that. One of the lots that's part of that project appears to be on the wrong side of the lawn. And I say that just because it makes sense for that lot to be right across to the street from and have access to the same street. Uh, it's gonna be built, um, wouldn't allow warehouse. It's eleven thousand square foot building. So I just think that the lot, the zoning line was just off by a half an acre lot.
Do you know the lot number from the map?
Uh, I can send it to you, I did send you an email, and I'll Yeah, yeah, because it's was part of a three, a four lot subdivision. Uh, we all had access to the same road, so it just made sense that they all be considered not.
That was off by Goshen, uh, seventeen K?
Okay, correct, yeah. So they're all in the E, the new E N T that allows warehousing. But they except for one lot of the city, you just kind of carved out. But the map is such a small scale.
Is that the lot in the middle, there's supposed to be a road?
No, it's the one to the left, as you come in the new road to the left, it's eleven thousand square.
So you know, front is on seventeen K?
Uh, actually, that lot does have lines on seventeen K.
I think
But they're all accessing that new, um, Yeah, the new, the new road that's being built.
So I think this, these maps are the maps that we got from the county. Um, and we just took sections of them and put it within the board. Um, but you can look, we didn't take really anything out up there, kind of left that as it was. Didn't really change anything, or, um, the chat up pros light is still there, and the lots that existed. We didn't really make a change until you went further down seventeen, past McDowell's Glass Road. So that's where the changes were made. So I'm thinking that probably was already in whatever zone it's in.
Yeah, it was all, it's all in the same zone now. So it would be now that property will be cut by two of these zones. I just think
Some of it.
Yeah, I'll send it to you. And then last thing was, I think it was a good idea that H C zoning to residential above. Uh, other communities have had it. Um, one of the issues is, um, the number of units. And we're very limited as far as the number of units. And in other communities where we had this, because of the limitation, it wasn't done until you know, if it's one unit per fifteen hundred square feet of ground floor area, something like that. Then then the density is enough to make it make sense and stuff all alone. Um, and provide that security and
We did that originally, and then when, um, I was just going this board on where we were at, I think one or two members, we thought they brought up some projects where that wasn't attractive in the town. So I think we went back and just, you know, put the limit of two. Uh, because one of the things that came about, you have a huge project, you know, with eight thousand square feet of frontage, storefronts, you know, what do you do the whole upstairs? But the idea again, behind it wasn't to create zones of apartments. It was more to, um, in the smaller businesses, what H C, you know, exists in, is to allow like the owner to live upstairs, or, you know, to have rental from one unit to the next. It wasn't to create a lot more apartments, it was just to try and help out the small businesses. I'm fucking miserable. So, but you know what I'm saying? That was the idea behind it, and I got your email, I explained it to the board, but I think that was more of, you know.
And that'd still be my recommendation, just because you need to have enough density, make anybody have enough value to do it. Otherwise, it doesn't make sense to be involved in residential sector, or if you don't have enough density. That was it, I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ross.
Just, just a comment on, everyone's talking about this, um, restriction and and, I do know I've been on the board for quite some time, and I was part of that, that resolution that was passed way back when. And what we found back then, and it still is true, is that projects were getting approved. And as the town developed, this project is ten years old, and everything else around it got built out. Everything else got developed. And so now that project comes, it has flipped hands several times, and now they come in front of the planning board in front of the town, and they want to build something completely different, something that now, because of the buildout, doesn't fit the the plan, doesn't fit the, where it is. So, you know, in the interest for the town, the interest of the residents, we needed to do something to hopefully push these, these projects forward where they get approved and they get built. Not where, you know, you sit on something for years and years and years, and everything else gets spilled around you. And the people that live in the town are impacted by it. Ten years later, something gets built that just doesn't fit the landscape, and that's how that came about.
Anyone else from Zoom, anyone on Zoom?
Any residents?
Yeah, Zoom.
Yes, hi, um, this is Stephen Barshav, uh, and I represent the same client that Ross was just speaking about uh, on Goshen Turnpike, I'm an attorney, pleasure to be before you. Uh, I do want to just simply provide for you the tax lot number, uh, that Ross did not have at his fingertips. It's one dash one dash five eight point two four. So, uh, Ross expressed all of the thoughts that I was going to express, so there's no point in that. I just have one or two quick questions regarding process. Um, I understand that this will be going on for months. Uh, is the town board accepting, uh, written comments after tonight?
Yes.
Okay, so I will, I will formalize Ross's, uh, comments, so you'll have that in letter form, and not just in the email that Ross had sent, uh, to Town Council member Johnson. And we'll go through, uh, in detail the fact that these properties, as I understand it, are all in the same zone, and that there is a proposed change. And this, uh, just so that everybody is aware, received final site plan approval back in March. Uh, the signed approval, in other words, all the conditions were met, the pla, the document has been signed. So I don't think that changing the zoning for this one of the three parcels, uh, is in the interests of the town. But we'll lay all that for you out in writing, and we can take it up there. I don't need to take any more of your time this evening, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone in the audience?
About this map? So this is some of the county, uh, produced map, it's, um, showing wetlands.
You did speak into the microphone there, so everybody can
Yeah, so we can, yeah.
I'll try to multitask.
Thank you.
Um, so I'm just gonna put it here. On the area that I'm gonna be speaking about is the exit one nineteen interchange. And, um, first of all, let me say, I really appreciate the board chairman, um, for all your work, this is not an empty project. But, um, to start, I wanted to ask, is all overlay zones, um, being discontinued, all of them?
These are recommendations.
Are the recommendations that all the zones are discontinued? So the, um, the, um, Shabagonk preservation zone? So no, the answer is no, so that one will stay.
Existing ones are not being taken out. This is going forward, if there's someone who wants an overlay, their recommendation is to not provide any overload in zones.
Okay, so the answer was no, right?
I guess, I mean, if you're asking about, we're just talking about overlay, obviously not, because we're doing more, it's worth a lot more to present that, so obviously not.
That's it, okay.
I mean, you rate it.
Okay, so, yes or no, thank you. Um, so I tried to come across, like, come at this from, like, multiple thoughts, like looking at the comprehensive plan. Um, open spaces, services needed for development and, and future residential. Uh, and even like enjoyment by the townspeople, by the residents, so that's where I'm, I'm looking at things. Um, in reference to the people being hired, I feel that the individual who is, um, going to not the engineering position, the other position, should have some planning background, and that's not something that I heard. Um, you know, here we're talking about land use, so, you know, I tried to learn as much as I could about that. And right now, I wanna take a look at, um, mixed use use. And so first in a general thought, um, I wondered about how the habitable room calculation would be, would be used. Um, there's some other zones, you know, one habitable room is two people. Well, it sounded like the purpose of the zone would be to give, um, the home, uh, the business owner uh, the opportunity to live in there, but then that brings up a lot of questions. If two apartments are allowed, and it's two habitable rooms that would allow four people, so you'll have that use, um, pressure, and you'll have the, the use of the business. So I just kind of wondered about that, you know, like, expanding it, you know, we're talking about like a one sentence, like, do we want to approve mixed use? But this is what, you know, what it really comes down to, is, um, who's gonna be using the rooms? If it's two apartments already, well, we know there's one more than the owner, right? So the business changing, I think it really needs to be defined. And I think the impact of having two as opposed to one owner occupied, um, needs to be looked at closely, and how those are calculated. Um, even, even vehicles, you know, how many vehicles are there gonna be allowed, or is it gonna be shared spot? Highway commercial doesn't have a definition for, um, impervious surfaces. So, um, you know, that concerns me too. Uh, it kind of makes me think it's a good place to move over to my thoughts about the exit one nineteen exchange as far as mixed use. Um, I wanted to say that I think there might have been multiple reasons why the last comprehensive, uh, uh, review committee put office and research where they're on Baker Road area. I think that also it could have been had to do with, um, buildable lands. Now, that topography in there is very different, and like I said, I got my map with the, um, the wetlands. Um, there's wetlands there, there's state regulated wetlands, there's, um, there's slopes there. Those lots on that side are like this. We got floodplain in there, we've got, I can tell you, I lived there, we've got drainage problems there. And we have no infrastructure, there's no, there's no drains on that road. I'm telling you where I am, which is before you even head down, we've got such problems with water on that road. So when we take out the, um, you know, the grass and the trees, we're gonna have some issues there. We're definitely gonna prove the wetlands. There's a stream that goes across the, the back lots there. And maybe they had office and research because that stream may even like change its pattern because of development there. So, um, I'd like to see some attention paid to, not just, at first I thought like open spaces, natural resources. But, um, you know, how, how that may affect the land that is now being designated with highway commercial, which is already a higher density. If you're now saying instead of office and research would, would have been forty thousand feet, right, allowed, now you're gonna go down to highway commercial where you could do it on a twenty thousand lot. You know, maybe that's something to consider, other reasons why it may have been that way, and why we should look at highway commercial for that area. Now, I got my other map, which is basically the map showing how much residential use is right around there. For us to say that it's matching the current use centers there, there are so many residential I mean, we are right on top of that. And what we moved in, it was the highway commercial. So, you know, I think, you know, as I speak for other people, because we handed in a petition on about the residents not being interested in seeing a change, um, these are some of the reasons that we're concerned about, you know? We have kids that are standing for the bus at the end there. Um, it's not, it's a safety concern, it's a blood concern. Um, just in, in, you know, highway commercial, when I look at the definition, current definition, I think there's things lacking in there. Like I said, impervious surface maximums, um, well, you know, light, noise, all those things need to be spelled out. So, you know, this may be a one sentence of brutal, but I, I'd like to see what the code will be, and I'd like it to be covered. So I wrote down some of the concerns that we had in, in that area. Um, as I say, it's like noise. I mean, it's, it's really messy down there now, too. Um, there's like paper and stuff, all over glass, and I don't know if we could ask business owners if they could have like a receptacle, you know, for their people that are looking like they're coming back from lunch, their employees, and they're just throwing them on the road, and there's glass, and it's, yeah.
Steve, please sit down, and I can clarify some of the new website.
Thank you.
So it's currently zone office research, right? Office research permits distribution facilities, currently now, when you move there, that's how it is. We could certainly leave it that way, but to me, that's not a good spot for distribution facilities. That adds more traffic than a small business that would be in H C. If you look at the bold tables that are in this presentation, you can see the lot area for O R is forty thousand square feet. For highway commercial, it's ten thousand, fifteen thousand, or twenty thousand, depending on, you know, um, specific stuff with the lot itself.
I know exactly what they are, but I
The big, the big thing, if you look, is the height's hundred feet in all of it.
Yeah, I, I know that's what it was, so
This goes down to thirty-five feet.
Hold on, hold on.
Stop, it's my turn.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Let's, let's be respectful to each other.
The lot width goes from two hundred down to one hundred. This is the overall size of the lot. You got the front yard from thirty, front yard on this one is thirty-five. So it actually increases the setback from the road. You have a side yard of thirty, a rear yard of thirty. This is a rear yard of forty. So it actually makes the business smaller on the lot with more setbacks to anything residential, which was why the recommendation change all the way up seventeen M was to get rid of enterprise, enterprise light, go to highway commercial. Because the lot use is a smaller footprint within the lot, increasing then setbacks to anything that's residential around it. So, I mean, we could certainly leave O R there, and you can have hundred, you can have ten-story, hundred-foot-tall distribution facilities, because that's what's permitted. We didn't change anything residential. The one lot is there, can we pull that up there? The one lots that is there is on both sides, back it up second, is on both sides, back up again. Go to the map, is on both sides of the road, Baker, this is the same lot.
So it's the same owner?
Twenty-four, one fifty, well, one owner, two different owners again own the same lot. It's the same lot. Twenty-four, one fifty, twenty-two, twenty-four, one fifty, twenty-two, the same lot. These lots are already business, this is the Alpine House, it's already commercial. This one is a C R wool, this one is all steel aluminum. That's the same lot. How you took a road and divided a lot, that really doesn't make sense. So that was the reason for that change, it's not, this hasn't got no effect on Circleville whatsoever. It's not gonna affect any of the residents that's here. I mean, I don't, I'm having a problem, when I see this email that you sent out here, and it bothers me, because the information in, and this is the second one you sent out, is incorrect. So maybe you should come to a meeting and talk to us, or talk to
Oh, but believe me, I asked Mr. Cohen twice if you and I could meet together, and he said
You can call me anytime.
Did you hear what I said there?
I don't
That was my
I don't go to him, he's, he's, he's not my bookkeeper.
Okay, Eric, you could have called me, come on.
Well, when you put this email out
I put this out, all over Circleville.
Yeah, and it's
Yeah, it's misinformation.
Tell me exactly what's the misinformation, that the setbacks?
Warehouses are
Warehouse are permitted on
In I, in Shaw? No.
Were they, were they changed? Because at first they were
This board's changed, we're never permitted.
You changed it.
No, we're not, no, this is the first draft, you're looking at it, it was never another draft.
Then my, my, my error, because I could have sworn you said warehouses are gonna be allowed in any district, did you not, when you started this, uh, mess of plans?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Will you send out a letter now to everybody that you've sent it to?
Well, yeah, we'll, we'll talk about this.
And that you were misinformed?
Well, we're still on age of one nineteen, gonna have warehouses mandated from west of one nineteen over to some town.
They already are allowed, but we're not making that change. That's already, that's allowed.
But it's the only place in town where you're saying warehouses will definitely be
No, no, there's three zones, three areas that are close to interchanges. That one currently exists, we're not changing it to allow for it, it's there. You could have one on Baker Road right now. Right now, you could have one where Alpine House is, next to the parking lot, could be a hundred-story warehousing facility distribution. It's permitted.
Hundred foot.
Hundred, yeah, a ten-story. And then there's going up seventeen M, it's already, we didn't change those zones, we just limited it that area.
You, you limited the warehouses to that area?
Right, so they couldn't go towards Circleville, they couldn't be on Baker, they couldn't be on any of the O R zones.
It doesn't affect our traffic, come on, whether they're on Baker or they're on Circleville or
It's already there. What, what they did, what the committee did, was reduce it and restrict it to, to a certain area where it wouldn't impact the residents. But remember that, if they don't touch, if they don't touch anything, if they don't touch anything, it's going to be there.
Okay, and she actually went back and forth.
So, so, yeah, I don't wanna put that in question, but maybe you could talk to me like
Because it's, it's not going, you know, I think the problem is that there's emails sent out, and it's incorrect information. So we hope that, like I stated at the last informational meeting, when we presented this, and I hope people read it. I hope you read this, because the way Mr. Johnson just explained it, it benefits, um, that everyone.
Yeah, I, I, I can't get my head around that.
Okay, that's understandable, it's okay, you can't get your head around that, I understand that.
How with the possibility of a distribution center being on exit one nineteen, whether it's westerny or not, be good for traffic and
Do you understand that it could happen right now as we speak? That can be built. It could be built right now as the zone exists.
It's an available use.
It could happen.
But well, not all over town. There, my backyard is that.
No.
It's already, Michelle, it's already there, rather than have this continuing
Yeah, no, I agree.
I suggest that you You can go through your letter
It's really unembarrassed now.
You shouldn't be embarrassed, you're allowed to be a concerned citizen, that's what we want. However, I think it would be to everyone's benefit, sat down with Councilman Johnson, if he can point out the things in the letter that you sent out, that you may have misunderstood some information, so you can get it straight yourself, and
Sounds great.
And that's what should happen.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Michelle.
You know, the best thing that we can hope for in all of this is that we have people that lead one of these sessions, whether it's today or, or in the future, much more knowledgeable, knowledgeable on what the changes are, and how the impact or, or positive or negative are. And the more educated and knowledgeable you are, then, then you'll pass it on to your neighbors and, and the residents that you speak to, um, with the facts and the figures, and, and hopefully, yeah. If, if there's something that, hey, I find, I found something out today that I didn't know yesterday, then we're heading in the right track, and that is the goal in all of this.
Yes, and to add to that, if it's something that you guys bring up as public that wasn't found by the committee, that's good, right, because that's what we want, that's the reason for this, is to hear from the public. So we can have something that works, that's the whole point, it's not, you know, as we pointed out earlier, this is the first step. It goes on for months, as much time as needed. Nobody's looking to rush anything, nobody's looking to adopt something that's not gonna work for everybody involved. It's a process.
Eric, can you respond to, um, how the code would be written up for the mixed use, or any other use that's a brand of use, right? How was the additional portion of the code written?
We're, we're not there, we don't have, we don't have final recommendations yet. This is step, this is step one, and once we have an adopted amended updated plan, we will then go about changing the zoning where needed, and it's not all gonna be done in one huge law. It will be done, it will be phased in with what the town, with the recommendation the committee believe are in phase one, the most important pressing things. And then there'll be different phases where we do some zoning changes to start with, the things that are the most important to the board and the committee, and to the public. Then we go about the next steps. So we're not ready for language yet, we, we have recommendations, the recommendations, as we've been saying tonight, are subject to change. So we're not there in the process yet. So I can't answer, no one can answer questions, how anything's gonna be written yet, we're not sure, okay?
I think what was lost here, that these are recommendations, I've said it multiple times today, I said it last time. These are recommendations from the committee to the town board. We have public hearings, we're gonna keep it open to listen to what the public has to say. We, it doesn't say we have to approve what's in there. These are recommendations, understanding, recommendations. I'm pretty sure that when, when any of this is passed, which is not gonna be, like, someone will believe it might be passed, it's not, it's not gonna, it's gonna take months, and we would do our due diligence to try to do what's best for the town. Anyone else? Come on up, state your name.
Uh, my name is Sidonajak, and I am a citizen. I am, have lived in this area for four years or more. Um, what I heard the speaker before me say Um, what I heard the speaker before me say, um, she may have misunderstood that it could happen in the district now, but she does not think it should be defined as the purpose of that area. She doesn't think that the, um, way that the use of that property, uh, should not be distribution centers. If you're changing it to something other than distribution centers, I think she might approve, approve of what you're doing. That you have consolidated it as now a distribution center, that she doesn't think that that's going to be a good idea. That's what I heard from her. Um, the other thing that I'm concerned about is, is there any way that you can control what kinds of traffic travel on what kinds of roads? Because I know it's not your fault that distribution centers became the big thing, and now there's, the malls are going, and, you know, places where we used to congregate are going, and we have twenty small vehicles going up and down the road, delivering everybody's thing that they wanted yesterday, and that's traffic. And we do have children, and children do go to school, and we don't want big trucks, trucks, or big, um, vans or whatever speeding down roads that are basically residential. I am confused myself by what mixed, uh, use is going to mean. I, I look at big cities, I know they have almost every building that's two stories high, have people living upstairs, uh, we've discovered that, um, we've mostly put our urban population in places like that. It's no place to raise a kid. And I think as a town, a, a, a sensitive town, we have to realize that though it, the density of who is living upstairs might make sense in how much money you can make from it, it doesn't make sense when you've got kids who have poor air to breathe, who, um, might get run over by a truck that's whipping down the road with a large container or something that they need to deliver to some store. Is there a way we can separate the population from our commerce? I, I did not, I mean, I went through, I didn't see any of that particularly, and I know that somebody aired when they let the school that my grandson goes to into the district where now, the zoning that it's now in. But it's going to get worse if there's distribution centers down there. If the, you know, we have to kind of re-root our thinking to, um, take into consideration our population. And, and we're not all in for the money, okay? That's not like I expect.
So, can I, thank you, speak to the warehouse then? If you guys see the, the, the recommendations, there's few areas in town, and you'll notice that they are in close proximity to getting on and off of seventeen, as to not affect the traffic, the grandchildren, the children in the town. The exit one nineteen proposal, recommendation, if I got this right, guys, if you go across from, uh, the Dunkin' Donuts, the gas station there on three oh two, across the street, all the way up to seventeen M, which is really all occupied now, that's where a warehouse, if this proposal went through, would go. It'd be roughly, I don't know, five hundred feet up to a quarter mile on a state road, Route three oh two, to get access to grid seventeen and get out of town. Same thing coming into Circleville, you would get off the exit, you travel five hundred feet to a quarter mile, and get off the road and into, into, uh, the U. But again, it's occupied now, it's allowed now. The changes on Baker Road, they used to allow warehouses there. They, no, they do today, is what I'm getting at. The changes that they're asking for would not allow them. Does that, does that help any? There's, there's a few other areas in town, up seventeen K, again, on and off the highway, on and off the highway. Um, RJ, you spoke about the road, right? That would go, uh, parallel to Crystal Run Road, that area there, right? It'd have to be just a road of warehousing. So, you travel down a road, cross over Crystal Run Road, get on seventeen, get out of town. As far as the smaller units that you're talking about, Mrs. Najak, the, the, you talk about Amazon, right? I mean, you know, yeah, they're, they're here to stay, I mean, I, I don't know what to say about that, right? Because, you know, everybody orders online now, you know, everybody wants it within a half hour, like a Domino's pizza, and someday that's going to be a reality, and there's going to be, you know, hundreds of these trucks floating around, and, you know, half the population's going to work for Amazon, or, or whoever. But I, I, I hope that explains a little bit the warehouse, uh, question. I think the, the recommendation by the committee, which I, I believe to be very wise, to get these vehicles onto seventeen and out of town as quickly as possible, so there's as little effect as possible on the population, right?
And, and just to add to that, just to, to get them off and away from the interior roads, which we see constantly, um, so, you, you have to design in a way, how do we redirect them, to your point, to, to Mr. Johnson's point, Mr. Cohen's point, to off the interior roads and closer and directly onto, um, the highway. The other thing is, is, uh, the small trucks driving through. I live in Scottstown, I work from home, I see them all day, Amazon, UPS, um, what's the other one?
FedEx.
It, it's crazy, and sometimes they're back to back, they're, they're, so, eh, we can't control that, unless we start telling people, don't order from Amazon, don't order from these people, start shopping in the mall, start shopping local. And I tell people that all the time, listen, when, when something closes and your taxes go up, you have to question yourself, is that, why did they close? Well, nobody is shopping at these stores that are paying taxes, that is, the mall, that, the small shops that are, are local to us. People stop shopping there, well, guess what? Amazon delivers, and Amazon doesn't pay our taxes, these small shops do. The other thing is, you touched on, um, the kids and living in these, these, um, proposed apartments or whatever, I agree with you. Unfortunately, we, eh, there's nothing we can do, because I guarantee you, the day that we try and do that, someone's going to hit us with a civil rights lawsuit. Uh, I'll give you an example, is, is, you know, where the Super Eight motel is. We have kids, we have families living there, I see school buses stopping in front of the Super Eight, picking up kids, and I can only imagine what kind of condition those kids are living in, and we can't do anything about it. I, it's, it's terrible, and it's, it, it, it really is sad to know that, that someone is living in that condition, and we can't do anything about it. I would love to tear it down and say, this, this can't happen, but guarantee that, that then they'll find a similar place to, to, to live like that. So, it, it's a sad, sad situation like that.
Just to follow up quick, the road, um, the recommendations telling that vehicles on roads is really only limited by the weight of the vehicle. So, the roads are designed very certain load, and that's what limits, and that's how the smaller vans get involved, the vehicles and stuff. So, that's not really something this board could do, or this board could do, um, you know, we, we did put weight limits on some roads, and those going Circleville-
We just did it, just did it a few months, on Circleville.
Right, we, we, we could just probably, we could drive, put a weight limit on that. Uh, but again, that's not going to stop the smaller vehicles. Um, so until they're coming with drones, which is in the future, you know, the drone's going to come to your house and drop off your packages, I personally would rather have a van come down the road than a drone flying over my head, but that's just, so, yeah, I hear what you're saying, it's true, and like, the apartment thing, you know, again, this is just proposed, maybe it's just one apartment owner occupied, and that's how it winds up or something, and that's certainly something, you know, that's discussable. It's not, the idea again was just to help out a small business starting out, and that was the last part.
I thought, I thought that, I, I haven't heard of it yet, that we do, we do this, but I was wondering how well that was actually worked out, because we have, goes up our urban areas that way, by giving people places to live that really aren't inhabitable, and we don't really need that in all of our, yeah, I'm just, you know, and, and, and on Baker, we all will start on that.
Okay. Next, please step up. Please come up to the-
I'm next.
You gotta get your hand up, sir. Can you state your name, please?
My name is Brian Rittenberg, and I live on Shaw Road, uh, since nineteen eighty-four. Uh, I came to this meeting with apprehension, from what I heard on the street, but after coming to the meeting, I'm very happy to hear that they're considering changing the zoning from office research to, uh, highway commercial, I think it's going to be better for the area. Uh, when I was looking at the highway commercial, excuse me, the office research, and I could see that you could build a, a ten-story building there, uh, I was, first I thought that was highway commercial, but anyway, I, I mean, if people, the ten-story building there, I could actually see that by my eye, the character of the neighborhood. Um, so, uh, anyway, I'm, I'm happy with the, the progress of the, uh, the change in the zoning of that area, I think it's really good. So, you mentioned, somebody mentioned before, Eric mentioned before, about, uh, uh, maybe one neighbor would come to this meeting and be happy with the changes, let's face it.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Brian.
Anyone on Zoom? Anyone in the audience? Okay, um, you don't need to, Master Plan Committee, you want to add anything? Mr. Johnson, you want to add closing comments for today? We're not closing the public queue, I'll keep it open.
Just for tonight, so, um, fine, park, we got school in the morning, get up early, so it's fine. But the idea is, again, not to limit anybody's comments, it's not to not hear you, the idea of keeping a hearing open now, that means every work session, you just come this week, right? There's one every week, any town meeting, it's open, I mean, one or two of those at least, right? So, there's plenty of time and written, after one down, you said it was going to be open for written, yes, it's open for written at any time, you know, until the hearing is closed. Um, so, you can reach out to your councilman, you can reach out to supervisor, maybe nobody, anybody on the committee, you can reach out to them, I think they're all pretty friendly, and scared of Chris Michael, but other than that, it was pretty friendly. So, um, again, it's to hear from you, uh, and then address your concerns, it's not to shove anything down anybody's throat, it's not to do anything underhandedly, you know, like I said, for two years, you heard me mention, we sat in meetings trying to figure out, you know, what problems we're facing, and we didn't start with warehousing, that came about when this board put the mark on it, and that was a big one, so we had to stop doing what we're doing and address warehousing. We can't not have warehouses in town, period, um, I think our attorney can explain that to you. So, we were like, listen, let's try and put it close proximity to highways, so they're not driving, you know, down a road, you have to follow on your way to the gas station or the work, or to the doctors. So, it was a certain distance that we actually initially looked at, from the three interchange in seventeen K, one nineteen, we couldn't do one twenties, that's already adjusted, and then, you know, the one twenty-two, that's it. Those are the only three that we could keep them that close to the highway, and that was the idea. So, we hashed out, I mean, probably went through four or five plans that we scrapped before we got something that kind of worked. Um, so, again, it takes time, and, and if you want to come, you come any Monday, it's, it's, it's the first and the third Mondays of the month, unless it's holiday, at six thirty, we're meeting here originally, but because the board is small, or the committee's smaller now, we meet in the supervisor's conference room, so it's on the other side of the building, um, you know, the door's propped open, we prop it open, but there's probably not going to be a dialogue between us, because if we're trying to hash something out and work at something, it's going to be more of a listening. I mean, if you want to reach out to us with concerns and come in, and we could set aside time for that, um, so it's not very like maybe the regular meeting, we, we come in at six, and the members come in at six, and we sit down and talk or whatever before the meeting. And just like a planning board, you can't just get up and talk with any concern, if anything you have, whenever you have a comment, there needs to be, you know, a process for that. But written, call, text, email, we'll listen, this board is going to listen, you know, and hopefully in the end, we come up with a project, or with, with proposals that can be adopted that work. Um, you know, we need to look at keeping town moving forward. The last time, if you look at this, um, two thousand and five, committee did this, office research was the big one, right? It was businesses, medical, that was the hot ticket. Now it's long gone, right? Pretty much, pretty much worn, warehouses were the hot ticket. Warehouses are not good because of the traffic that you end up behind if you live in an area where they are. So, and trying to limit those locations was, um, the reason for these recommendations. So, again, any comments, any questions, please reach out, um, we all have day jobs, we're all working, it's not going to be back here right away, um, but, you know, we'll certainly listen to you if you can.
One more, one more thing, as this committee continues to make recommendations, this document will be updated, and it'll be put on the website, when the committee's ready to give those to the town board, we'll get it up on the website. So, the things that are talked about tonight, the things that are talked about in written correspondence, in meetings, and all of that, if the committee sees fit to update their recommendations, we will get them out to the public as the problem, as the hearing process goes forward. So, this is the May sixth document, and maybe there's going to be a June third document, maybe there's going to be a June twentieth document, quick updates. So, be on the lookout for those, they'll be posted as the, as everyone continues to do their work. Tell your friends, we're here every week.
Also, there's no adjourn, um, I just want to give another shout out to the Master Plan Committee, great job, as always, it's a great job doing, because we've got a working document, and, um, hopefully, we'll get it eventually right, within a year, two years, whatever it is, how long it takes to get it right from revenue, if not, I won't go. Motion to adjourn.
A motion to continue the public hearing.
Motion to continue the public hearing, keep it open.
Keep it on second.
Roll the paper.
All right, new dates, new dates will be announced.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, second.
Roll the paper.
All right.
Thanks for coming out tonight.